Well, Karen said he's gonna be here.
Oh.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, Karen's gonna be here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, Karen said he's gonna be here.
Oh.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. All right, well, I think it's, we're waiting for one more board member, but it looks like more here, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. First, we need to have a motion to have our alternate substitute for Chris.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So, all right, well, now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Do it in the light of thy face and honor, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. So we have two items on the agenda tonight. First is Carla Schreiber under contract for 82 North Avenue, tax ID 080.09-1-38.1. Applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval for change of use from retail small, section 175-19B, to an office professional, section 175-19B20 classification pursuant under the Village Code, section 175-40B, property zone NP, neighborhood business. Is there someone here for 82 North Ave?
We're already ready.
Yeah, we're already here.
Well, if you'd like to, somebody would like to come up and represent the project up to the podium and give their name and address and then tell us what you're looking to do.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carla and I'm a nurse practitioner and medical director of Lovely Aesthetics. It's been kind of more of a small, I have a medical treatment room out of my house and renting a room in Rochester, but hoping to expand and open a small med spa in the space of 82 North Ave. Love the historical charm, fall in love with the property, so do you have any questions?
Well, yeah, so, well, if you're all set with kind of what you're doing, I guess I'll open it up to the board for any questions that they might have.
There were some comments and concerns about drainage and the bushes on the side. Drainage will be maintained. I think that does, that goes with the original parking areas that we gave them years ago, I believe. We have to reinstate that.
Actually, I read the minutes. I didn't see anything in the minutes where it was actually a condition of any prior approvals.
No.
In fact, the minutes, the minutes indicate there was a, there was an agreement between the current owner and the neighborhood. There was just a private agreement between them, but it wasn't a condition of the village planning.
It wasn't a condition.
The same, the same with the shrubs between 82 and 86, there's no mention of any.
I'm the current owner. I've been for 30 years and.
So, yeah, I guess if you can just hold off, I will open it to the public.
Sure. Not a problem.
When we are done with board members. Thank you.
And your business is a, not a beauty business, but more medical.
It's medical aesthetics, so botox, fillers, chemical peels.
And your license for that?
Yes, I'm a nurse practitioner and I can be my own medical director and stewardess.
Okay, and you'll hire people and they'll work under your license?
Correct, so right now I have two registered nurses that's working with me. That's why I've kind of outgrown my space, so, so, yeah, licensed registered nurses would work under me in the same capacity.
Okay, so you're in NP?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Practitioner.
And any other businesses out there? Are you gonna have the whole building?
Yeah.
So the hairdressing is gone?
Yes, I moved.
Okay.
So the second floor was an apartment. Is that still gonna be residential or are you?
No, I'm hoping to use it all for the business.
So are you looking to hire anybody else?
Yeah, so the goal at some point would definitely be to expand, possibly like rent a room to like an aesthetician or a massage therapist, one of the two of the rooms like that, but primarily the goal will be that Lovely Aesthetics will grow and have, you know, maybe some support staff at some point, but right now it's just myself and two registered nurses and they're really gonna be working like one or two days a week, so it'll mostly be in the beginning.
So like when you have clientele coming in, they'll be obviously like one at a time for their hour and then, I'm just thinking of the number of employees, the number of customers and then your parking situation, are you gonna have enough?
Yeah, so right now there's only, there would only be about like four treatment rooms that I would be utilizing. I'm hoping to either have like an office or like a common area, you know, like a break room, something like that. So I don't foresee that, I think the parking that is there would suit, would suit us great, yeah.
How much parking do you have?
Sixteen.
It's seventeen spots.
Sixteen.
Sixteen spots.
Sixteen. Sixteen.
Yeah.
You went out there, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I remember.
So the state, is there a state agency that provides an oversight, oversight of this med spa?
So, just, I would say like my licensure and I have, you know, medical liability, I will be prescribing to a professional amb spa, but that's more just like an organization for help or guidance, but like there's no regulatory oversight other than like the nurse practitioner, you know, the board.
So what do you do with your medical waste? Asous waste?
Yeah, so I'll have like a service that comes and picks that up.
Okay.
Like shacks containers and things like that.
Shacks.
Yeah.
Except for a sign, are you doing anything to the outside of the building or?
No, maybe just a little exterior paint, like around the windows.
And you're, are you purchasing the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have any more current questions from the board? I'm not seeing any. I would like to open up to anybody in the public that would like to speak. All I ask is that you come up to the podium, say your name and address for the record and direct your comments to the board, please.
My name's Dominic Napolitano. I live at 1337 Schlegel Road in Webster. I own the neighboring property at 86 North Avenue. It's a residential. I currently rent it out to a tenant that's been there for probably 12 or 13 years now. My big concern is the drainage. That was my first concern. There is a portion of land that Scott Funter had purchased from Claire Rigby, who is the one I purchased 86 North Avenue from. There is a deed written which has the wording and stuffs to allow for the installation of the drainage system in the yard going from the parking lot at 82 and cuts through the yard at 86 and then crosses over the Reynolds Road address to the storm drain.
Correct.
And I just wanna make sure that that drainage is taken care of because my property sits lower than the two of them and it could flood easily if those drains are not gonna take, that's my largest concern. And the shrubs, they're beautiful shrubs, they're huge, they require maintenance regularly. It's up to me, I'd probably be chopping them down, taking them out, removing them, they're too big to keep up with.
Are those on your property?
Yes, they, they primarily sit on my property and my understanding was that there was an agreement between Mr. Rigby and Scott Funter when he put the salon in. It's a handshake agreement.
Yeah, I took care of it for him.
And, yeah, Scott's been taking care of it. And if they, if they were a condition of the change of use to a salon at 82, I don't know. They're not in the notes or anything?
There's no mention of any shrubs. The only mention of shrubs was along Reynolds Drive to keep those low so that it wouldn't block traffic coming, you know, coming in and out of the parking area as fast, but nothing between 82 and 86.
Okay.
If the shrubs are on your property and you wanna chop them down, go for it and take them down. They're your shrubs, you do whatever you want with them.
Claire was in his 90s, I felt it was, I just said, I told him I'd take care of it for him. He was a good neighbor and I took care of it.
That was, that was nice.
It was a handshake and a six-pack of chairs, so.
It's really got nothing.
That's how Claire worked.
The shrubs have nothing to do with the village. The village doesn't.
It was not a requirement for the change of use.
It wasn't a requirement. And, and if you've got something in an easement or something in a deed, again, that's, it doesn't run to the village, we're not aware of any.
Right.
It does run to my hurricane.
No, there's, I'm not aware of any drainage easements of the village of Webster and the back of that property. So, and again, she's not proposing to make any changes. So I don't know in the last 20 years if you've had drainage issues, but she's making no changes, so if she's not doing anything that's gonna make it any worse.
Right.
Well, the pipes that run through his yard, if something were to happen to them, I guess she and I would be responsible. I put them in, it's, it's, it's the storm drain off the parking lot that moves the water 'cause we are low. We used to get a lot of water in that spot. So I put the storm drains in to catch the water and move them to the storm drain on the back of my property at 7 Reynolds Road. So it runs across my backyard through his backyard. So his concern is if something goes wrong with it, he doesn't wanna be responsible for it, which I guess makes sense. She and I could have a written agreement to take care of it if something happens. I don't think it's a problem.
And again.
Not your problem.
It probably, you know, it sounds like there's either, there should be an easement agreement between your property, the owner of your property and your property and generally speaking, those kind of agreements say something about who's responsible for, to maintain it. But I, we don't have that document in front of us, so I can't tell you what it says or doesn't say.
It would be, it would be in their deed.
Well, sometimes.
It's an easement agreement.
Well, sometimes it's a separate document, an easement, but it would be recorded like the deed. They could throw it in the deed, I don't know, but, but in any event, it's an issue between the two property owners.
Would you hand it to us?
Yes, yes, it is, yes. So it would be a deed, that's the deed for your property, for backyard.
Can I show you this? Can I hand this up to you guys?
Sure.
Don't.
I would hand it to him.
Whoever wants to see it.
Yeah. I don't leave. I don't, I don't need to go there.
Have you had issues in the, since that drain was put in? So the drain's doing his job?
No, 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 annual basis, but water main broke on Reynolds Road a couple of times and my backyard was flooded.
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 And then I had to pay to get those storm drains cleaned out to catch basins. I had, I had Chamberlain come and clean them all out. So I mean, if anything were to happen, that obviously would fall on Carla and myself.
The owner?
Correct, and I'd take some responsibility 'cause I just gotta run through my property as well still. I still live at 7 Reynolds Road, so.
And you're on Reynolds Road across from Duncan Dome?
Yeah, yeah, I built, I'm part of Claire's in my property, subdivided that.
This reads like the drainage was to benefit Ms. Rigby, 86 North Ave.
It benefited both of us 'cause we were getting a lot of water in both three yards.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't say anything about maintenance. I guess if you have a problem in the future, you know, we're, contact Ms. Schreiber, she's gonna be the new owner and hopefully the two of you will work out.
We can always.
It'll work out.
I'll go with Scott, yeah.
Absolutely.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak about this project? Not seeing any, so I will bring back the board for any final thoughts, questions?
Does anybody else, did somebody ask about state inspections or is this a state, does the state have anything to do with inspecting it, certifying it?
I mean, even in my business, they come in and check. Sure, a little licensing department from Albany comes in and checks on your.
And I think they probably have access.
Kind of OSHA-ish, if you will, they'll check on your cleanliness and sanitation.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for 82 North Avenue for a change in use from a retail.
Seeker.
Oh, seeker, first.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. First, I'll take a motion for pursuant to seeker, being a type 2 motion.
I'll make a motion with that to action under seeker, no significant requirement.
I have a motion for seeker.
I'll second it.
I have a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Right now, I will do, sorry, I should've known better, but now I'll take a motion for a change in use from a retail to an office professional.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Kathy, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Peter, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need to sound.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Carla. Carla.
All right, our second public hearing for tonight is Ernesto and Catherine Figueroa, owners of 237 Judson Street, tax ID 080.14-3-49. Applicant seeks to install a 12 by 24 or a 288 square foot, 10 by, or 10 foot, nine inch high accessory structure. Applicant therefore seeks an area variance of 125 square feet to allow for the 288 square feet accessory structure where a current 163 square foot accessory structure would be allowed pursuant to Village Code 175-59. Applicant also seeks relief from the maximum height allowed of a 10 foot pursuant to Village Code 175-11, section F, to allow for the accessory structure with a height of 10 feet, nine inches. Property zone residential R-1-13.6. Do I have Ernesto and Catherine?
Yes.
If you can come up to the podium and tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for your time and consideration. This is, I'm Catherine Figueroa, Ernesto Figueroa.
Everybody.
We moved to Webster in 2023. We love this town. Our property is pretty big, as you can see probably from the claim, so we maintain it ourselves. And in maintaining it ourselves, we have purchased quite a bit of equipment. So we have the lawn mower, the snow blower, the rates, the shovels, the saw, we have outdoor furniture, we have planters, we do our own gardening, so we haven't hired any contractors. My husband does all the work and he services also. So he's been quite busy in the last few years. So in saying that, we do have a smaller shed in the back. It's outgrown its capacity, so we would like to have a bigger structure so we can put all of that equipment into that structure. And then also my husband services the action machines, so we will be able to service them as well. And I just wanna thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you.
And you said that you're gonna be moving that older shed?
Yes. And we are willing to put, you know, it's an eyesore for anybody, we're willing to put like landscaping around the structure if it's rented. We've talked to a couple of our neighbors and we, you know, we had had, you know, a pretty positive response.
So is this the actual shed you're looking to purchase?
Yeah.
So I'm assuming by the picture, does it have like metal seam roof?
Yeah.
And then is it like vinyl siding on the side?
Yes.
Okay. What color is it?
It's actually wooden.
Okay.
Uh, blue. You want a color picture? I have a color picture with me.
Yeah, if you had a color picture?
I do.
I just have a black and white, so.
Yeah, I'm glad.
He sent us gray, so we didn't have any, a gray or a blue.
Okay.
That's why white came.
So is it a dark blue or is it a?
Just a flying white.
Was it, yeah, actually, I'm so sorry, yes, it's black and white 'cause we wanted to match with that.
Okay.
We looked at it a while ago.
Gotcha. Yeah, I did see that recently. Totally forgot about it. Are you planning to run like utilities to the shed?
Not as of right now. Eventually we'll come back to you guys and have an approval.
Okay.
It's not catalogued.
Anybody else from the board have any questions?
It says there's a 14 by 14 foot slab there already.
That's where our yard, that's not where that's going to be, that's like directly outside our door, that door.
All right, I misunderstood.
Yeah, but you have to show concrete.
Yeah, it's way, it's in the back, it's like.
Right.
I don't even know, it's probably like 6'5".
Yeah, just around right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably, I got that wrong.
Oh, okay. Now, this is more, you know, your shed is, to me, this is a garage.
Yes.
This is a prefab garage with the garage door and code allows one garage on the, on the property. Now, your garage is incorporated into the house, it's underneath, which is a unique situation.
Very different.
But code doesn't, I mean, this, to me, this looks, this is a garage and I would say that, you know, you're putting two garages on your property.
Especially since it ends at the driveway.
Yes.
The placement of it.
Yeah, the placement.
Let me, you said in your letter that the addition was intended, among other things, to protect vehicles. Are you planning to park a car, a motor vehicle inside this building?
Not as of right now, I just, I need to work on my vehicles throughout, you know, things and then the challenge.
When you say your vehicles, I'm not talking about your lawn mowers and your snow blowers, I'm talking about, you know, things you drive on the street.
No.
You're not gonna park any of those in the shed?
No.
In the accessory building?
No.
Is there a reason then why you need a garage door on the front of it?
That's how they were selling it. That's how they were selling it and it's easier for my snow blower and my, my grass cutter, you know, to come out easily because my shed's all the way to the back nowadays.
I understand that.
Small shed.
But I guess, so, but the concern is that it appears to be a second garage. The code only says you get one garage and you get one accessory building, you know, and an accessory building isn't a garage, you can't, you're not supposed to park vehicles in there, that's what the definition of a garage is. If they could somehow, you know, eliminate the garage door or put some other kind of doors on the inside of it, you know?
Yeah.
It's the precedent that it sets, you know, you don't wanna have neighbors or whatever say, well, they got two garages, why can't I have two garages?
Exactly.
Understandable.
You know, half that door, quarters.
Because there is, there are double doors on the side of it also.
Yes.
And isn't that sufficient to get lawn mowers and snow blowers in and out?
Well, we didn't figure that out with the, the salesperson, so.
Well, I understand, it's pretty bad and that's the way they make them, but.
Now, can you get shed doors instead of a garage door?
I can put a, I have a better.
Yeah, because it does set a precedent, it's definitely, you know, it's a garage door and although your garage isn't facing the street.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that would look like a garage, but the code says you can only have one garage.
Understandable.
And that's, to me, that's two garages, but if it was a shed door, that would be different. And you do need something there facing the street, just for aesthetics, you need a type of door, you need some type of door, so, yeah. And it is a, a large variance. Take that into consideration. And will it be on a pad? Will it be on blocks?
Compacted gravel.
Compacted gravel, okay.
Yes.
So no floor? Will there be a floor?
Just the gravel.
Just the gravel?
Yeah.
No, there's a floor in the shed.
What do you mean a shed?
On the shed, yeah.
Well, they build them with a floor.
Okay.
Do we have any questions from the board members?
So, so what we, at least from my point of view, what we wrestle with a lot in these sheds is, and the code has been changed to allow for a larger shed than what was in the past. Even with the variance that the person got many years ago for their shed, would probably, would not have needed to get a variance now to qualify under the new regulations. So what I personally wrestle with all the time is the size of these sheds. You know, and, and one of the concerns that people have come to us, does this set a precedent? It does set a precedent, whether you want it to set a precedent or not. It does set a precedent. And so, um, when you, when you take, what your request is, is to literally take what you're supplied 163 square feet by code, and you're going up to 288 square feet. So you're asking for a pretty extensive variance. So that's, I just want to make sure that you understand why these questions are being asked.
Yeah.
You know, we've had, we've had applications that request 10-foot variance or a 10-square foot variance or, you know, something like that. This is over and above what we've ever, ever dealt with for a shed. The height, the nine inch, nine inch, it's not, to me, that's minimal. I mean, that's not an issue. But the, the size of the square footage of the shed is an issue for me.
All right, well, think about it some more. Right now, I'd like to open it up to the public for any comments about the product. If you can come up and come to the podium, please state your name and address, please.
Carol Ormond, 248 Judson. So I appreciate what you've mentioned is that we're concerned that this is going to set a precedence for others to ask for variances, you know, on the extended size. Because, you know, it is really a garage within, you know, maybe a size of a shed for the 125 square feet. I don't live adjacent to the property. We live on the other side of Judson. So it's not, you know, something that is abutting to our property, but it is, is it going to set a precedence for others? And the 125, you know, my other concern is, you mentioned that it's going to be doing repair work. Are you doing repair work for yourself or as a small business? Because it doesn't, I don't know, it doesn't seem that you need that large of a shed to do repairs on a, you know, on a lawn mower or a snow blower. So if you had a garage, and then you said the extra 125 square feet was, you know, to store your extra equipment, that would be one thing. But to say that you're going to use the whole thing for storage of lawn equipment, I think that might be excessive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How big is your garage?
Yes.
Tiny. Is it compact?
Come up, come back up to the podium, sorry, just so we can.
There's something mentioned, I think.
I drove, you know, one, I went by, and I saw it. Is it a two-car garage?
No.
One-car garage, underneath the house.
It's a one-car garage.
Right.
And what I have to do every season, all your furniture goes inside, okay? Everything goes inside, whatever I can put in there. Because I'm not going to have access to my shed because it's so far away. And I have grandkids, and that's why the reason we have grandkids. That's why, that's the reason why we moved over here, okay? And, and we have family visitors, so we don't have the space available. The kids have gotten hurt because they have the furniture piled up in the lower part of the house. So at this point, she can barely walk on the, on the garage. She can't walk sideways.
He has a lot of tools.
So I gotta, and I'm not running a small business. You may, I'm a worker right now. I'm just doing what I think is right to have a family space for the fun. That's all what I need. I don't need anything else. I have my job eight hours a week, no business whatsoever, if that was your concern. So this is above my fund. It's not my anything else. Okay? Thank you.
Bridget Waldorf, 20 Elm Street. I have been to more of these board meetings than some of the guys on the board. And I've seen the, from when I built my shed many, many, many years ago, it's a sixteenth of the size of this, basically. And I think, although we can always use more space, I do think this is excessive.
All right, thank you. Small inversion. Does the board have any more questions?
I just have an idea. I think that we probably disagree with this shed as it is. But if I saw a wall instead of a garage door there, I might, I might lean towards it. But maybe this is not appropriate for this time.
Okay.
When you were shopping for sheds, I'm not familiar with purchasing one. How much, it goes in increments of size?
I am guessing, but I just picked that one.
Yes.
Because according to what I have to storage, you know, that's all.
If you could size it down, it would, I think, you know, stop our concerns, or just the size is quite large. I'm afraid it wouldn't set precedence with your neighbors or anybody that sees that. My grandson is visiting today. He's a neighbor on Judson.
So for your information, the diagram that you gave us with the current shed back there, if you took that whole space that, including the spacer from borders, that, that is approximately equivalent what is, what you can have without even having a variance. That, that whole space, that whole square there, comes out to what we allow 163 square feet. Obviously, the distance away is problematic in your case. But that, the rule comes down that basically it's 1% or it's 160, 163, or whatever is less, or whatever is 1%, but less than that. So it allows, if you go to some properties in the village, like in Opaniac or Iroquois, or in those areas there, they can get a bigger shed than what 1% would be. But they allow, we allow that, given the fact that they have absolutely very little room to store stuff. Just trying to give you some history back about how this comes about.
So is there, there an option to downsize the shed a little bit? Or is that?
I don't know. I mean, I'm carved a street. We have a big old farm right there, industrial farm. So we figured like, we can give it a shot. So that's triple the size of what I'm talking about. So I don't know, I've seen it, or you're aware of it.
Would these of those just still?
That was very controversial.
Yeah.
When it was, that was years ago, and how it got approved is, I don't know. But that, that isn't helpful right now.
No, no, I'm not trying to tell her, trying to.
I understand. If I was you and driving around, I saw that big thing there, I'd say, you know, yeah.
That garage got moved.
Does the board have any more questions?
I don't have any questions, no. Any suggestions, maybe downsize, maybe table it, downsize?
Well, we can do Seeker, take care of Seeker right now. If you get type 2 pursuant to Seeker. Do I have a motion for that?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Kathy. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? All right. So.
Can you give them the option?
Yeah, I guess I give you the option on what you would either want to possibly table this application, pending maybe some further investigation on your behalf on what would be the best size shed that you would be looking and possibly reducing compared to what you're currently proposing, which then might help alleviate some of the board's concerns. Or we could, I guess, take an action and you would kind of be taking your chances at that point. So I will leave it up to you as far as you would like to do.
What's the maximum size they can build? 192?
No, it's actually 163.
163.
163.
Okay.
But there's just the 1% of the gross lot.
Lot area.
Right, right, yeah. So, sorry. So you're currently allowed a 163 square foot shed?
Understandable.
So I guess it's up to you. I'll leave it in your hands on what you would like us to do. If we can table it, and then you can, like I said, do some research, and if you can find any wiggle room, you know.
One thought I had was if that garage door could be replaced by a man door, it would be more in line with what I would think would be okay. Still, it's a gross, size. Yeah, yeah. But I think the garage door is the big thing that throws a.
Yeah. Throws size and the garage door.
Yeah, yeah.
The 10 by 16, the 10-foot wide by 16 is going to get you into the game. You don't even have to come back here. 10 by 16. You could probably find a door, a garage door, that will fit on that or normal door structure, especially if you change the dimensions. 10-foot wide door, maybe go on to 12 by, whatever, 12 by whatever, it's 160. 12 by 13 maybe, 12 by 14, it would probably get you there. And I think that if you went with that, you could, you probably could get, get a shed that might fulfill your needs without even coming back here, or one that's a little bit bigger than that, but it's not as big as what you have now. And I think that that comes down to what we're looking at.
Yeah. Yeah. I agree.
Pull it out. I'm not against. We'll see your time.
All right, so you wish to table for now?
You want to take that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So just so you understand.
I do understand.
No, let me just make this clear. If this board denies your application for the variance, and then you later want to come back with a shed that's still bigger than 163 feet, you got to pay the application fee all over again. Whereas if they table it, and you come back with something smaller, you don't have to pay another application fee.
I'll have to take the decision, because at the right now, I'm done.
We'll table it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
And you have, you can table it for what, 12 years?
It's up to you.
It's up to us, yeah.
You can table as long as you want.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, it's true.
It's up to the board. They want to take it back.
All right.
And perhaps, and a suggestion would be is to, is to give the villages, Chris here, the building inspector, give him a call. He might be able to give you some guidelines and thoughts on what may, what may work. Okay? All right. Yeah, I would.
So you need a motion to table.
And a time limit on it also.
Well, you could do that if you want. You don't have to have a time limit, but if you want to table it till the next meeting, the next two meetings. Do you think you'd know in a, in a month what you'd want to do?
I would think so, yeah.
So you can just table it till the next meeting, then, and be a month from now. I have a motion. So I need a motion for the applicant's request for a table, and we want to put a timeframe on that.
So I'll make a motion that we will table if you're all request at this time, and I would put a two-month limit on that.
Thank you.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Then, yes, the last, last thing we have to do is meeting minutes from April 17th.
And they have all?
So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read those and remember those and read them again. So I will entertain the motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 17th to 2025 as is.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I have a second by Vivin, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none? All right, now I'll take a motion. First of all, do we have any potential business for next month?
There's one that said, I think, tentative, but we've got until the end of this month before applications are due. So we should know at the end of the month what we've got locked in.
Huh?
They'll probably come back.
That's fine. I just want to let you know I will be on vacation next month, so I will not be here for next month's meeting. Did we, that was one thing. This board, Chris was the deputy. So he, he could serve as chairman, assuming he shows up. We thought he was going to be here tonight. So I now with no. What, did you, minutes to approve?
We did.
We were talking.
Sorry about that. All right, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second by Peter, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none? Meeting adjourned at 7:00.